But again, that was almost four years ago. So during that time, as you're seeing here shortly, the growth has continued. And so I want to be able to articulate to the community why now another bond just completed one. So we've got to remember, that was four years ago, the growth has continued throughout these four years. And we'll be able to share some information with you shortly. Once I complete the presentation, we'll start to give you an opportunity to ask questions. We're going to have two mics set up in the back to give you an opportunity to get your questions answered. And certainly want you to leave here tonight feeling informed as it relates to, from the district perspective. So with that said, we will, we will get started. Again, I'm Dr. King Davis Superintendent of Schools. Again, thank you for being here. So I have a school board, certainly want to acknowledge them tonight. I believe we have one school board member in the audience, Mr. Martinez, Eric Martinez in the back. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Alright, so now looking back at 2016, let's start there. Certainly, thank you for your support back in May 2016. As that, that was the same issue we had then. It was absolutely based on the growth that we were experiencing and the capacity issues we're experiencing through our schools. And so let's look back, 2016 is a shoot. So you'll know, and I hope feel really good about how we utilized taxpayers' money at that time. And so if you remember back in 2016, we had a bonus to approve a $285 million bond. And these other things to achieve with that bond. At that time, the major focus was new buildings, particularly new high school, new elementary, new athletic facilities and security and safety upgrades. And did some other renovations and upgrades throughout the district. And so this just give you highlights, again, the new high school. We're certainly excited about the new high school, certainly say the art, unrivaled campus throughout the greater Houston area, really throughout the country. And so we're very excited about the space that we provided for Sheldon ISD students at this high school. Also athletic facilities, as you know, new football stadium, Panther Stadium, 10,000 seat stadium. Again, a stadium that rivals stadiums throughout this city and throughout the state and throughout the country. So again, very excited about our stadium. Sheldon Lake Elementary, which is right here in this complex as well. Certainly excited by Sheldon Lake. Major focus on Sheldon Lake was creating a performing visual arts space, really a unique space there at that campus. And if you haven't had a chance to tour Sheldon Lake, certainly a beautiful campus as well. Certainly, safety and security upgrades throughout the district. Certainly, it goes without saying, as you're aware, of all the safety concerns throughout the country with school shootings and so on and so forth. We certainly have done some things and are currently still upgrading some things as this relates to safety, security, metal detectors and buzzers and cameras, additional cameras and so on and so forth throughout the district. Of course, we're still in the process of converting the old K to KMS, King Middle School. And we'll have that, that building prepared for King Middle School students going into next school year to transition those students. And we're currently in the process of deciding then what we would use King Middle School for. So certainly want the community to know, we will not be wasteful. We're very excited about potential opportunities for King Middle School once those students move to KMS. So to give you a few things that's going on there, we're very excited we partnered with Harris County Public Health Department. We'll be looking at providing a clinic, a mobile clinic there as part of that site. As you probably know as a community member, that's one of the areas that, that we lack in is we've been able to provide medical services to our community. Typically, we gotta either go to Humble or Lena Park. And we certainly want to provide those services as best we can. And so we're very excited about a partnership with public, excuse me, Harris County Public Health, where our community and your children be able to come to King Middle School and, and have access to medical services on that campus. And they will bring mobile units and truly have doctors and practitioners, medical practitioners there that can provide medical services there on that site. Also, we're looking at, currently we're exploring, we have a potential partnership to also provide like a public library. As you know, again, part of our community really don't have a community center as part of our community. And so looking to use that space as a hub, again, providing medical services. Also having, giving the community an opportunity to come to that site, using a library for public, having a public library for our community, for our students. Looking to offer adult ed type classes where a community member perhaps want to finish their GED or adult classes. Or whether a community member might want to learn another language. And so we're really exploring how can we use that space to give back to our community? Because it truly is, it's the taxpayers and we want to make sure utilizing that. As far as athletic facilities there, we will utilize those, Little Leagues and so on and so forth. But certainly we'll bring in the community to utilize. So KMS will not go unused. Again, we're pushing those things back to the community. And so that's certainly just a few examples of how we will utilize King Middle School. Also, we as part of 2016 bond, did some renovations throughout all of our elementary schools to implement what's called Compass Schools. Compass Schools is our schools of choice program where we give our students an opportunity for choice. Meaning, and those three areas of choice are performing and visual arts, high tech, and STEM. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. And what this is all about is exposing our students at an early age so they can be prepared to choose their pathway by the time they enter middle school and high school. Certainly, we don't expect pre-K, kinder, first graders to know right what they want to do right when they become adults. But it's about exposure. How do we expose students to different pathways so they can make an informed decision by the time they enter our high school? Again, technology upgrades throughout the district. As you know, it goes without saying, technology is ever-changing, right? And so we're constantly having to upgrade our technology infrastructure and computers and so on and so forth to make sure our students have the most updated technology to work on. Also STEM labs, added to both middle schools. If you have a middle schooler, you'll know that we have two STEM academies at our high school. I mean, excuse me, at our middle school, very excited about that program. And again, as those students matriculate to our high school, we were just designated, it was called a T-STEM Academy from Texas Education Agency at our high school. So those students will be able to matriculate to that STEM program. Again, it's science, technology, engineering, and math that are focused. Also, we certainly had to purchase land with the 2016 bond for all the projects that, that we were able to, to complete. Purchased additional school buses. Again, more students come to the district, certainly have to provide more transportation. Parking and parent drop-off, we certainly try to improve. If you have an early child, pre-K or kindergartner, you know the paintings of the, of the entering and exiting those sites. Certainly not perfect, but we certainly tried to improve those sites there. Again, cover ways, so when there's inclement weather for our students at those campuses, improve those areas there. Also with energy management projects, again, trying to be more efficient. As you know, no different than your own home, we, we need to update some things. More LED lighting where it's more energy proficient, so to again, saving money there. Bringing our campuses, our older campuses in particular, up to, up to speed as it relates to more energy efficient lighting. Alright, so that's the 2016 bond. Just to give you a quick overview, now this time, just going to show a quick video that's again, to give you now visual of some of the things that we did with the, or completed with the 2016 bond. Alright, great. Again, just wanted to give you a visual again. I know you're aware, just wanted to show you. If you haven't had an opportunity to tour those buildings, hopefully you're able to attend the high school, Raven Cutty and Sheldon Lake. If not, hopefully you can return on Saturday, March 21st. We're doing that town hall meeting. We want to give community members that did not have an opportunity to tour this building to actually have an opportunity. This is a phenomenal space. Now, for the bond 2020 information, really the reason you're here. So why another bond at this time after four years and recently completed another bond? So before I get into that, what is a bond election? So it gives the community the opportunity to vote on paying for construction and renovation of public school facilities. What can bond proceeds be used for? For construction of facilities, renovations, purchase of land, and capital items such as equipment for the schools, whether it's technology equipment or other capital outlay type equipment. And what the bond funds cannot be used for, which is sometimes a misconception there, could not be used for general operating budget or for teacher salaries. So those things cannot be used for, with bond funds. Now, the May 20 bond proposal. The focus areas for this bond proposal are these three primary areas here. And certainly the first one is, is the, the primary focus of the 2020 bond, the same as it was the 2016 bond. Really is focused on current and future student growth. The growth has continued. Also, which, with the, uh, part of that growth, issues that arise because of it, the building capacities, having capacity issues at our campuses. Then last but not least, we'll certainly continue to focus on the safety and security upgrades for our district. Now more specifically, the student growth. So as you can see here, over the last, the growth has continued over the last 10 to 15 years throughout the district. Growth has been steady between about 4% to 5% every year. What's interesting, this past year, we exceeded that growth and we had an 8% growth rate, which, which actually surprised us, which is pretty significant. And you put numbers, make that more real to you. 8% growth throughout the district equated to about 700 to 800 students. And so as you can see here, over the last five years, we've had a 30, a little over 30% decrease in growth, which equates to almost 2,400 students. So a lot of that growth, about 2,000 of it, has occurred since the last bond passed. So again, I want, want you to, to truly receive that as it relates to, yeah, we completed a bond, the 2016 bond. But during that time, the growth has continued and now we have to address that growth as well. And so we, of course, this school year just passed, finally at 10,000 mark, which was a milestone for our district. And so we finally reached that mark of 10,000 students. Also, future developments that we have become aware of, which will impact our growth. And you, likely have seen this construction, future developments. We have the Vareo Apartment Complex, which is on Titwell near Dollar General Auto Zone. That complex is about complete and should start being occupied this spring. As you can see here, 264 units, one through bedrooms. And we're projecting 400 to 700 students from this particular complex. Also, another apartment complex, the KV Residential Development, which is on Titwell near, near O'Reilly. A little smaller there, which will generate about 100 to 150 more additional students. And then also Imperial Forest, you know, the Rocky Wood Elementary there, that project is underway. They're, they've told us that developers, they're, they're planning to build about 326 additional homes there, which would potentially generate about 500 to 800 additional students. And then also recently, we have found that there's a current proposal for, for helping development at Garrett Elementary. Now, building capacity, that's related to our campuses. So what I'm going to share with you is for each level, we're going to talk about the ECA level, our pre-K, kinder, or early childhood academies, then the elementary level, the middle school level, then high school level. And I want to share with you anticipated growth. Kind of done, I'm going to show you a 4% anticipated growth, which was happening around the previous five or so years. And then this past year, we jumped and hit that 8% growth. So I want to show you scenarios, kind of the, what we think, what we had been experiencing over the past few years. And then what's kind of worst case scenario, if you will. So from a 4% growth rate at our ECAs, as you can see here, we would hit capacity around 22, 23. So again, at that ECA, early childhood academy. Now with the worst case scenario with 8% growth, we'll potentially hit that 21, 22, which is only a year away. And we were, we're currently talking about particularly at our Cravens Elementary, excuse me, ECA. It was built as such to add a wing to it. So we certainly are prepared and, and part of the reason why we're here. Also, elementary for the 4% growth there. Again, I know we just opened Sheldon Lake and it's already almost at capacity. It was built for 700 student capacity. And I forget the exact numbers, we're about a 600 plus. And so we're, we're getting there. So as you can see here, with a 4% growth here, we would be close to capacity at 23, 24 throughout the district at all of our elementary campuses. And with the 8%, if that trend was to continue, again, we'd be close to that capacity at 21, 22, at the end of the 21, 22 school year. Middle schools. It looks as if we have a little more room there. So with that 4% growth, because once we move King Middle School to King High School, as you know, a high school has more capacity than a middle school, right? And so King, the old King High School has a capacity of about 2,200 students. So the reason I want to, want to spend a little time there, and we've had a town hall before, I want to convey to the community, we don't wish to put 2,200 middle schools in one building. That, that's, that's not conducive to the best instructional setting for that age group. A typical, if you do some research, a typical middle school is about 1,000, 1,300 students. Middle schools, we love them to death, but that age group, they're just a unique age group. They're adolescents, they're going through puberty, and we certainly don't want to have a side of a middle school that of a high school. So although we can fit with 2,000 plus students, that's why that number looks like we have more time. But if we were to keep that where we should at the middle school, that capacity would come much quicker. And other, the other side to that, if the community wishes to, well, max out the old King High School, that means we would have to redraw our boundary lines for a lot of our most students to have to then transition to. So we really want our students to attend school, where there's only attend school. And so that's our wishes as, as a district here. So I wanted to share that with you. Now with the 8% growth there, again, that's the, that's the worst case scenario, we'd be at capacity about 23, 24. Now with the high school, again, you're wondering, whoa, we just built a new high school. Yes, we did, we're very excited. And we built it as such that we're currently at a 3,000 student capacity. We're in the process of, the process of expanding it to 3,500 student capacity. Again, this building was built as such where we could add on, and we're currently, currently preparing for that. And, and it was built with that shell space already in place, so just a matter of not to oversimplify. Forgive me for you, construction people in the audience for not using the correct technical term. But it's a matter of knocking down smog and ready to go and get those spaces ready, prepared for our students. So, but with that said, with the 4% growth there that we had been experiencing in the recent past, we'd be at capacity around 26, 27. And with, again, the, the high growth spurt there in 22, 23, okay? Alright, and this build-out projection, so what, what does that mean? We had a demographer did a study in our district recently, 2018. And so they, they're projecting, their projections have been pretty solid for us. Again, they do a lot of things that's definitely way beyond what I know about. But they do a lot of things, formulas and so on and so forth. And they project down the road, what will it take, I mean, what will it look like for years to come in our district? And so as you can see here, on the moderate there, on that moderate growth of 4%, enrollment projection here over the years. And build-out means we basically take all available lands on, because at some point Sheldon will build out, like many other communities. Where there's no more other land to build on and the growth will kind of subside and hit a ceiling, right? Which is not there yet. So the growth continues as developers are developing more land. And so the demographers are projecting we'll be built out around 2028. Again, this is not definitive, but this is their projection. So as you can see there, with the moderate growth there, build out about 15,000 students, 14,000, 400. On that high growth rate there, around 20,000 students, okay? So we give you, kind of put that into its proper context, like Lena Park has about, I think, 25,000 students or so. Alright, now for the specific proposals for the May 2020 bond. What, what are we proposing to the community as it relates to the 2020 bond? So there's three propositions. And the reason you see three propositions, during House Bill 3, the legislative legislators changed the process. So if you recall, the 2016 bond, the bond election, everything was, was consolidated together. Your, your new high school, your stadium, so on and so forth. Now, the, the way the law works, you have to pull out, you can only propose instructional type buildings by themselves and then any type of athletic and other non-instructural builders, they have to be on a different proposition that makes sense. So you see three propositions here. Proposition A, so in essence, when you go to the polls, you have to vote separately on three different propositions. So you can potentially vote yes for one proposition and no for another. Yes for all three, no for so on and so forth. So you'll vote on these propositions separately. So Proposition A, it will focus on new campuses expansion. So this Proposition A is really focused on the student growth as it relates to new campuses, new buildings, so on and so, renovations, so on and so forth. Proposition B, you'll see here shortly, we'll get a little deeper in there, proposing a multi-purpose community center. And then Proposition C, an auditorium. Now more specifically, what will Proposition A entail? Again, new campuses expansion, expansions to accommodate growth. From a campus perspective, middle school, at some point, we will need a third middle school. As I shared with you before, considering the, the typical size of a middle school, 1,000 to 1,200 students, again, we're projected to needing to get there in, in around three years or so. And so we can't wait that long to start the planning process. So again, the middle school, looking to build a middle school with a capacity of about 1,300 students. Also, the reason you still have a ninth grade center there, as we've discussed, still having one high school. After the high school gets to capacity, considering a ninth and/or ninth, 10th grade center on the same site. And that's a common process of school districts with still a one high school district, where potentially when your high school is at capacity, you build a separate ninth grade center or ninth, 10th grade center, where they're in close proximity to the high school, they can still access programs and so on and so forth. And then they matriculate to the senior high school after their freshman or sophomore year. Also, an early childhood academy, number three. Again, at some point, again, we will need to move forward and build an ECA number three with the capacity of 700 students. Elementary school, number seven, with the capacity of 750 students. More immediate to those first three, when we talk about new campuses. Those things certainly within the next three depend on the level. If you recall back, it's certain, depending on what level, certainly going to reach capacity a little sooner than others. So those things will come on board at different times. Nowadays, when we see, when you see Cravens ECA, eight classrooms and no middle school wing expansion, that's more of an immediate concern. I would tell you, Cravens ECA and no middle school is really more of an urgent matter. I would tell you, that's a priority right now. We're at capacity at those campuses currently. And so again, Cravens ECA was built as such where you can add a wing to it. So we certainly would immediately add a wing so we can increase to eight classrooms. No middle school is already at over capacity, about almost 200 students over capacity. It was built as such to add a wing to it. And we would want to pretty quickly add wings so we don't have to, because we're going to temporarily have to add portables potentially this year to alleviate some capacity issues that we have currently there. And so we certainly, that's more of an immediate concern there. Also relocate the early learning center. What that is, we provide childcare services to our employees. And that's currently located at Sheldon Lake ECA. We want to relocate that center to see King Middle School. Again, that's part of how we would go about utilizing King Middle School. Because what, what tends to happen with our employees, want to more centralize our ELC. Because not many of our employees are accessing, not as many that we would like are accessing the ELC because of the distance, the proximity issue that it relates to our campuses throughout the district. Also converting the early, so what that would do and then help Sheldon ECA. Once, if we will move ELC out of there, that would create, we'd gain about four classrooms or so to, to help us with some capacity issues there for a little while longer. Again, we, when, then we, again, we'll focus on security and safety upgrades to all existing campuses. And then also with some exterior parking renovations, upgrades to existing facilities. If you've been at Crenshaw Stadium, some other facilities throughout the district, our parking lots are certainly in need of some upgrades and what have you. Now, Proposition B, a multi-purpose community center. We're proposing a capacity of a multi-purpose community center of about 10,000 seats. And part of this, the why behind that, so let me be clear. Proposition A is, is, is an urgent matter. That's certainly focused on growth. Proposition B and Proposition C is certainly, I want to be transparent with the, with the community. It certainly is a desire. I would tell you, Proposition A, we certainly is a need. Proposition B and C, it certainly is a desire. And we'll tell you why. Part of multi-purpose in this is, first of all, providing, providing this community with a multi-purpose community center. One being, we, we struggle with having a space for our graduations. And we don't have a space in this district where we can actually house or hold our entire district staff and/or graduate our entire senior class from year to year. So we're spending money in other districts and other places to graduate our students, so on and so forth. And we, we have no facility, really, only northeast side. If you're familiar with this area, you have spaces on the, give you examples, you have spaces on the west side of Houston. For, for instance, the Smart Financial Center. You have the Berry Center. You have things, you have no location on, on the northeast side of Houston to have any major events, any, whether it's be graduations to host concerts. We want to do more than, than graduations here. So really, for northeast side, for us to lead the way and be a hub for, for events and other things throughout this community and throughout the greater Houston area. That's the reason you there certainly, the primary focus would be to certainly take our, take care of our community and our students. And that's a major focus, but also to expand from there, to look at concerts and speaking events, trade shows, other types of events to attract folks to the northeast side. It only behooves us to create a hub on the northeast side, that just creates more jobs. For instance, when you bring, we're constantly, recently had conversations with the local developer, Generation Park. If you're familiar with Generation Park, you've seen FMC pop up there. You've seen the apartments and some other things, restaurants. So when you have a hub of this nature, it creates more business. Now, it's not definitive, but the talk is, we get a hub such as this, it brings in, which helps all of the property value. It brings in the restaurants, it brings in the hotels, it brings in these other pieces that helps the entire community. First of all, it's for our taxic values to increase, it helps home values to increase. So this is more about certainly to help us as a district and our students. Gives us space to do some things uniquely as a district, but also impacts the northeast Harris County area. So I want to be transparent about that. And I would tell you, as your superintendent, I would love to lead the way on that for northeast Harris, for Sheldon ISD to lead the way on that. And to have an opportunity for folks to come for us to generate additional revenue from folks having events on the northeast side of Harris County. And for Sheldon ISD to lead the way on that before someone else does. And so we're very excited about this potential opportunity. And so certainly want to, I know you may have more questions about that. And certainly want to kind of give you our why as it relates to, to this particular piece. Lastly, is an auditorium. So again, this is more of a desire. Again, this is about our students. How do we provide more opportunities for our students? And so again, we have awesome athletic facilities and this is a piece that's missing. And so for, we want to again, provide a pathway for every child. And so right now, we can't provide a swim team. We can't provide that because we don't have access. We're, we're not close to, there's a YMCA in the Lena Park area. And there's some other pools in surrounding areas, but our students don't have access. And so again, we want to lead the way on this piece. First of all, provide our And so again, we want to lead the way on this piece, first of all, provide our students with opportunity. But also, we will be the first to have an auditorium that can be that can serve as a competition pool. Although there's some folks that have pools around them, they can't host tournaments, they can't do certain unique things, again, to generate revenue. Because it's not built as such where they can have competitions there, uh uh sanctioned competitions because the pool is not of the appropriate size. So again, only northeast side, so this side of Houston. So again, as you can see here, we have some opportunities as a community, as a district to lead the way from the northeast side. Provide first of all, more services and opportunities for our students, but also for the northeast area to generate revenue. For for our community, our district and us leading the way on those two pieces. Alright, now, how does this impact you, how does this impact you as a taxpayer? So let me go back a little bit, tax impact, before I get to twenty twenty-one, I'll remind you, how did it impact you and your taxes in two thousand sixteen? If you remember again, in two thousand sixteen, we asked for two hundred eighty-five million, at that point in time, we had to ask you for twelve more pennies to our. To to our to our tax rate and what that did at that time, as you can see here, and I know your home value can be different, but we give you different scenarios here. Uh, you can see there a fifty dollar dollar, my home a fifty dollar dollar appraisal value. Uh, increased to a yearly increase of about eighteen dollars and monthly about uh a dollar fifty, and I won't read all those to you. So you can see the tax impact in two thousand sixteen. This time, we're asking for four more additional pennies to generate four hundred thirty-eight million dollars. And again, you can see the tax impact there on the approximate value of your home. So yearly increase and what that equates to monthly. And also want to share with you, with this four penny increase, we will max out our tax rate. We can't go up on our school taxes anymore from there, so I want to put some finality to this. Uh, again, after this impact, the the amounts of funds we generate from these additional four pennies. And to give you a little, this gets very common to me, so us increasing our tax rate by four pennies for this twenty twenty bond. Basically, we generate, we can sell bonds, once our taxable values reach a certain, of, so as we bring more businesses to the community, Generation Park, some more commercial comes in. Which is an awesome thing for us, that's how, as our taxable values increase as a community, with more commercials, so on and so forth. Our tax rolls increase, we're able to then generate, that's how we generate this, these millions of dollars, we're able to build additional projects, okay? And so that's how this, as far as I know, it can be confusing, but at the end of the day, uh that's the tax impact. And that's what I know is most important, likely most important to you. And so we certainly want want to make sure you understand the tax impact there, because it can really be confusing and there's a misconception, there's a difference in your property taxes. So we heard a few comments about your 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 property, your taxes going up, we don't control your property taxes, so we want to be clear, that's Harris County. Uh, everybody's property taxes are going up because your values are going up on your homes. And so school taxes, this is the impact that we control, okay, so I want to make sure that that you're clear on that. So a few comments, got ahead of myself here, common misunderstandings, uh and so this proposed violation would be used to increase staff salaries. Again, we cannot use bond funds for salaries for any uh district expenditures of that nature. Also, if you're sixty-five and older, you're set, as you can see there, you qualify for homestead exemptions. Uh, your taxes are frozen, again, unless you do some type of improvement, again, your property taxes or values go up, your taxes may go up from that perspective. But not from from, I mean from, excuse me, from major home improvement and so on and so forth. Uh, but then lastly, why have my taxes increased more uh than what you have proposed on, and that's where a little confusion. Again, your taxes didn't increase, we 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 did what we said we would do, your taxes, school taxes stayed where we said they were going to stay. If your taxes increased because your home values increased, okay? And so perhaps property values, as you can see in the scenario there, you have it praised for a hundred thousand in two thousand eighteen, it might have been praised for a hundred and twelve thousand in two thousand eighteen. And of course, uh you're gonna pay more taxes, alright? So that's one of the misconceptions of bonds and and the school taxes. Alright, uh last but not least, election dates. And so certainly early voting, we we again ask you to come out and exercise your right to vote, uh uh certainly those are the early uh voting uh dates there and times. And then also obviously on the election today, May second. Alright, so now at this point in time, we will open up for questions. Uh, it's my understanding, Mr. Wertz, you're gonna have the mic set up at the back, please don't be shy. Um, so we're gonna ask that you line up in the back, ask your question, and we'll certainly do our very best to answer your question.
Question one. You say it's not ready, not tor, what is it, the um swimming area?
Oh yeah, notatory.
Yeah. There's one at North Shore, across the North Shore High School, why do we need another one?
Well, that's North Shore, ma'am, that's not.
I know, why does Sheldon need one if it's available right up the street, why do we need to, that's our. Tax. Our money, it's a billion dollars.
Well, yeah, that's the, that would be to, it did the mic.
Yes, it's not on.
Yeah, alright, let me make sure you can hear it.
Yeah, it's on YMCA. The ti, i- is it cut off?
No, he, yeah, he, they're getting a fix, you're fine, I'm I'm I lost. Test it, test it.
No, it's not YMCA, it's across the street, okay, um.
They're giving me another mic, give me one second here.
There, say hello, there you go.
Yeah. Oh no, that's young, grab that, that's that mic.
Can you hear me, okay, there we go, alright. Now, auditorium, the again, that's a great question, but again, that's that's not to 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 be quite frank, that's not our community, we don't have access. Uh, to the to that pool, uh uh again, as my understanding, I think UML, I think uh there's some other uh pools around us. Uh, but again, when we talk about trying to to bus our students or even asking, can we use those those facilities? Uh, those are not in Sheldon uh community, and so at the end of the day, as I've stated, it's about providing access and opportunity for Sheldon ISD students. And our community and providing them with that with that opportunity that they currently don't have.
Cause we don't have a swim, swimming team with Sheldon at all right now.
That's correct, yes.
Right. Okay, you say it would benefit us to have one on the northeast side, cause as far as you know, there's none this side of town.
For for competitions, yes, that's correct. It's my understanding that right now in the northeast Harris, uh there's not a pool, there there's some pools around us, but there's not pools as such that can host. Sanctioned competitions and so on, because the lanes are not uh such as, thank you Olympic, uh size that 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 you can host competitions and so on and so forth.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and and.
Maybe you might want to look into it, but it's not sure on, it's right across from YMCA. Okay, so. What, um, Monaham, what have y'all done to fix Monaham High Middle School, actually the elementary school? Cause Monaham was over capacity, then you build this Sheldon Lake, and I guess some of the kids moved there, some of the kids moved to Royalwood. But I don't see anything being done with Monaham, they don't have a basketball court, it's rusting, I don't see any mention about that old school. It hasn't been fixed.
That's a great, great question, and it is actually currently being fixed, I mean, we're about to, in fact, if you go and look at the board meeting from last night, the board workshop. We're literally in the process of renovating uh Monaham. So it will be, you will see, Monaham is receiving actually a facelift as we speak. They couldn't start on that space because school was in session, so they're starting that work uh during the time that we're out of school, so going into next school year. So I'm excited to report to you, Monaham is an area, it's one of the oldest.
It's cut off again.
It's one of the older built, older than in our district, and so we are renovating and doing some unique things, there it is receiving a facelift.
I'm just concerned with why they didn't facelift that school before they start doing all the other schools.
Well, the other, we had capacity issues, ma'am, we we had to get your creative, so it's about priorities, and so it's about what what starts first, what what we need to get going. Uh, in a certain order of things, and so they could still have school there now, but we're getting to that part, part of the program.
So once you get, if this bond goes through. Our um kind of school taxes go up again? Cause you say then y'all start getting revenue and all this stuff, but how does that affect us? What are we, the homeowners gonna get some benefit out of it? Do we get to come to concerts for free or anything, or no?
Concert for free?
Yeah, I mean, you building this big stadium, what was the, what was the reason for this big stadium?
I would tell you, I would tell you, there would be some events, absolutely, as as our community can tell you, we've had other events, to give you an example. Uh, we've had movie nights, we've had other events uh for the community to come out to the stage, so certainly will be events that we certainly will not charge the community to come out and be a part of. Just for community pride and so on and so forth, but as it relates to other uh folks that would like to use our facility, bring events to the. We certainly can't tell you, you would be allowed to enter those, those particular events for free. But certainly, we will, as we have done with other facilities, have provided the community with opportunities to come out and enjoy those facilities at no cost for different events.
Okay, security upgrades, why was that not also done with the past two twenty sixteen bond, why was that not a priority? You say it's a priority for the twenty twenty bond, security upgrades, expanding ECA, why those wasn't done?
Again, ma'am, well, as I stated, it was a priority, if I can't go back, security, the safety upgrades were done with the two thousand sixteen bond. What I stated was, it will continue, it it's an ongoing process. And so absolutely, we we've done some upgrades, again, you see metal detectors in our schools, we've we've begun to, again, increase the presence with cameras and and other uh. Tough spots to see and so on and so forth.
What other security upgrades do you do now, what else do you need to do that wasn't completed?
I'm sorry, could I ask the question?
What other security upgrades do you need now that wasn't completed? You say you need to still do security upgrades.
Absolutely, because there's it's ongoing, because technology is ever changing, so we're constantly looking at, for instance, right now, we're researching as technology changes. To give you an example, uh with school shootings, there's some technology out there right now that wasn't out there then, that even can detect. Again, we gotta test these things out to make sure it's conducive for our facilities, that could potentially detect weapons coming through schools, that that's more. Technology savvy than metal detectors, because metal detectors, as as we uh share with the community, that's not something we necessarily wanted to do, we felt that that it was a necessity. And so we certainly want to look at technology that's not as, as it's from the optics of an eyesore with metal detectors, that's more uh. Or that's not as visually uninviting, if you will, so my point is, tech, just the same with technology, technology is ever changing. I would tell you probably if there's any bonds uh that we would ask this community to take on, technology will probably always be a part of it, it's ever changing. Same with safety and security, things change all the time, so we constantly have to update and and stay current with times.
Um, okay, um. Your rating, in your book, you say y'all have a B rating overall? Is that correct, with the education part of it, maybe building schools? But is the education part of it? So with our kids, because I don't really see it being shown, so you're saying your rating is a B overall?
Absolutely.
But on the red side, the ECA, the red side, your ratings are for most of these schools, Cs, Ds, they're not having good ratings?
No, that's that's an accurate, ma'am, I will I will cut you off at thirty, that's not accurate. First of all, the the district as a whole is a D. And let me take you back further, when I arrived here four years ago, uh at the end of two thousand fifteen sixteen, we had made great progress. Two thousand fifteen sixteen, the district actually was rated improvement required, then we filed an appeal and won it. From that point on, then we moved from that to seventy-four, moved to that from seventy-eight. So went from fifteen sixteen, improvement required, sixteen seventeen to seventy-four, seventeen eighteen to seventy-eight, and this past year eighty-five. And so that's that's increased, that's improved.
So if if, let's say. We research it last year or eight, any of these schools, Monaham, Royalwood, I think Royalwood got a good rating, so. There is no website that's gonna show that the school is still at academic risk?
No, that that I didn't, we always have work to do.
What about the Title I program?
We always have work to do, we have some deficiencies, we have work to do every year, all of our campuses not where we want them to be. And so we absolutely have work to do, so we never uh shied away from from constantly wanting to show improvements, ma'am. I'm just sharing with you from whence we've come and where we are currently, absolutely, we have plenty of work to do at all of our campuses.
Oh, okay. So you need to build, how many more schools now? Seven, you need to get to seven, you say in elementary schools, or I just need to know how many more schools we trying to build?
Well, eventually, right now, we just added elementary number six, so let me go back, currently, we have two ECAs. So this proposal, we're looking to add a third, so we would move to three early childhood academies. Currently, we have six elementary schools, we just added Sheldon Lake, so that was elementary six, so eventually, we will need to get to seven. Middle school, we currently have two, in years to come, we will need to get to a third middle school. High school, we still would be one high school town, at least my recommendation has been to the board and will continue to be, to remain a one high school district. And to alleviate capacity issues there, looking at adding a ninth and or ninth tenth grade center. Uh, to to alleviate some uh capacity issues at King High School.
So is the new high school finished, completely finished?
I'm sorry?
Is the new high school finished?
Yes, ma'am, you're here, students are here, students have been here since January.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And the community center slash arena, we're using that for rodeo or was it, were we, you know that ready for?
Any any type of events, ma'am, we whatever, we're wanting to, again, to emulate what's going on throughout Harris County. We we, first for us, let me go back as I've stated, for for school, community use, uh district use. We need a place to graduate our students, right now, we're spending money in all Dean ISD to graduate our students every year. Or we may have to go downtown to the to the uh wherever the Texans play or what have you, it's an enormous amount of money. And so we want to graduate, this is the first year we're gonna have our graduation at the stadium, but we deal with implement weather and those types of things. If it's raining, we have to try to graduate our students out of a, out of gymnasium where not many parents can partake in that. So that's a primary reason, but as I said, I want to be transparent to this community, that's not a make or break, we can survive without having it. But that's a desire, as Sheldon ISD, as the community knows and the district knows, part of when I got here four years ago, as a. As a school district and community, we're looking to brand ourselves, so as I'm telling, as I've shared with community members and as I've shared with folks and I've talked to them one-on-one. Sheldon has been kind of lost in between UML and Lena Park, right? Those districts and communities do a great job, and that's not a hit on those people, they do great work. So when I got to Sheldon ISD to give this community, you're not there where I'm referring to, oftentimes, folks weren't sure where we were located. Where is that place, where is Sheldon? So my point is, as a community, as a district, how do we brand ourselves, how do we get in the game, how do we begin to bring businesses? Commercial properties to our community, it's about building, it's about doing things, being cutting edge. We can no longer sit in the background, we gotta be at the forefront of things, so that is my recommendation to this community.
Oh, okay. Well, only concern I have is the educational part of it with the district. You can build all the schools you want, but if the kids are still, but you're saying they're not falling behind. Then I have a problem with approving more and more schools if the educational part of it is still lacking.
Wow, alright.
You can wait to get to my. So I just want that maybe to be a little more of a highlight because it's not just me, there's. Other people that is concerned about the education part of it. What is the Title I program that y'all are part of, what is that, can you explain that for me?
Title One, ma'am, is based on the economic disadvantaged population. So we receive certain amounts of money from the state based on the students we serve, depending on uh, the economic disadvantage status.
Oh, okay.
So we receive, there's all types of, we have a small Title One funds, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four.
Grants and funding?
That's not grants, but that's funding we receive from the state.
Okay.
But again, that's.
So hi, um, my name is Jennifer. Actually, I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and a child in early cravings and grandkids coming up in the district. Um, I do want to say thank you for putting our children first and having metal detectors at the schools. I've actually been at the school where I got caught in a drill for um, shooting, which was sad that I didn't even have to have that, but I appreciate that our kids um, are going to be equipped in case something does happen, because we know that too often it does happen. Um, I also want to say that our community needs different things right now. You know, we're kind of forgotten area. We're county, we're not really city. Um, the only pool that I know of are the city pools that are around here and maybe one at the Y M C A, but I didn't know exactly how much the taxes were gonna go up, but the fact that it's thirty eight dollars, to me, seems like that's the price of a membership to a gym. So to be able to have that, I think it's great. I personally have kids that play sports, and on the side, to keep them out of trouble, I spend on average three to four hundred dollars a month for extracurricular activities. And if we could actually have something here for our kids to do, I'd supply that. Um, on top of that, um, I had a couple of questions about, a couple of things with here. I know that we need an increase in technology, but there are some schools in H I S D that offer laptops for kids to take home. Uh, my kids have laptops, but I know there are a lot of kids that don't have that. We know a lot of have books for our kids to take home and study. Um, would that eventually be in a bond?
That's a great question. We're, we're not opposed to that. Certainly, I want to give you definitive answer on that. Let me say this, that's, I know what you're talking, let's call it a one to one initiative, and some districts have tried it, some are not. And I would tell you with that, it's a little tricky. Once you invest in that, if you Google that a little bit, there's been some pushback to that. Because once you invest in that, again, technology is ever changing. Say if we buy Chromebooks or what have you, the technology changes a year or two later, then you have outdated inventory. You've invested all this money. So some districts really took a hit as if they were being wasteful. So that, we've actually had some of these discussions. So we're not necessarily opposed to it, but it's the approach that we would perhaps take to it. Perhaps kids have an opportunity to check out things, to come home and so on and so forth. So it's my understanding, we may have some things that we're already doing. I don't want to speak at the high school, yeah, the second area, yes, we already have an opportunity for kids to do some of those things. But actually to allocate those, um, we gotta be very careful because we certainly don't want to come off wasteful. Because again, you've purchased it, two, three years later, we're stuck with all this stuff we purchased and it's outdated. And now we gotta purchase more to keep kids, you know? So technology, gotta be a little, little careful.
Well, then with the library, uh, would we be able to have a computer center for kids to be able to do their homework with then?
Talking about the K M S department, we talked about creating like a community center?
The library for the community?
Oh, absolutely. That, that's, I'm very excited about that opportunity, I tell you. Now, we hadn't flushed all that out, but I can tell you, we're committed to that. Uh, the, 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 the medical side of things I mentioned, that's, that's in the work. We were in the process of signing M O U with Harris County, so that's, that's moving forward. So very excited to be able to provide those services to our community. And then that portion of it, we're certainly working, that will happen as it relates to providing the community an opportunity to come into that space uh, and use it for, to research, bring your kids to study. And kids can check out books and parents can come and access technology and fill out a job application, whatever the case may be. And so we're, we're really gonna work hard to provide. Uh, and hopefully, if you have any skills out there, you can come and teach a class. And so we really want to do some unique things there uh, for our community to come and access different services.
I also, um, thank you for having all day pre K. I got to confirm that last year, so I really do appreciate that. Um, you mentioned the lines, pick your kids up, that still needs improvement, but it's okay.
We work, but I promise.
Um, y'all are having a swim team, well, hopefully we get one. Would you consider maybe eventually having a golf team also for the district?
We do have a golf team. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I agree with that.
We just need more kids to participate, we uh, it's, it's.
Also with the.
Now, we can't build a golf course, but we, that would make things easier, and that's what's hard about not to.
We have Tino Park, but that's kind of empty.
Yeah, there you go, that's true.
But um, also with the elementary, um, I live in an area that's kind of forgotten, and we kind of have to be bused to Royalwood. And so I was actually explaining on my child, onto the new elementary. If we're gonna propose a new elementary, is there a way we can put it in the old neighborhood or somewhere near the old neighborhood? So that way our kids can be a little closer?
We certainly will research that. I mean, I, I would tell you the process we go through and that, it is really worth the growth happening where, where, I mean, typically, you gotta put new buildings where the growth is taking place, where, where, we're paying for that very reason, right? So if the majority of your growth is happening in certain parts of your community, obviously, you want to put space there where parents can access it. And so we'd have to go through an exercise there to see where is the best place, obviously, where is the available land? So a lot of that is driven by that as well. What land is available for us to purchase, to build new facilities? And so those types of things goes into that. But no, that's, we certainly will research that.
If you look at that, um, where I was, we were flooded, so we had four and a half feet of water on our own and settled it all in neighbor. So there might be some cheap property out there also. But, okay, I'm gonna get off the mic.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Albert Benoit. Been in the community for at least forty years. Closer to seventy than I am sixty. And I just want to thank you and Mr. McCall for all y'all have done for this community and for the kids. You know, they say it takes a village to raise a kid. Well, I'm proud to say that I'm part of the village that's raising these kids, because you got some great kids in this community. Also proud that I voted for the last bond. I don't like my taxes growing up, but I like seeing what I get for my money. And we have a beautiful facility here, the kids have a safe place to go, you know? Everything is positive as far as I can see, and I see no reason not to pass the next one. I also want to thank you for working with the community and involving the community in your plans. We've never had that before. Like I said, I've been here forty years, and I've never heard uh, administration, anybody from the administration, include the community on upgrading, you know, what you're doing. So I want to thank you for that. I'm not gonna keep you time, I forgot half the things I was gonna say already. But once again, thank you so much, and you can look forward to my vote, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. The support, thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name is Jeanette, and I just want to tell everyone that I grew up in Sheldon. So it's near and dear to my heart. Um, I went through the Sheldon I S D school and graduated from C King. And I see great things in our district, and I'm so thankful for like even just the multi-purpose communities that to come to our area. So everyone can gather together. I feel like it's an investment to the future of our children and our community. So I feel like doing it's a, a no brainer, right? Um, so making sure that um, we also have those new campuses to, you know, the teachers are, have a lot of students in their classrooms right now. So moving some of those students out of those classrooms and giving more space for the kids to be, you know, in classrooms with lower capacities is essential for your kids' education. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know that, and um, I'm an advocate for Sheldon I S D. Y'all are doing amazing things, and just wanted to say that.
Thank you, thank you so very much.
Hi, my name is Bill Petrie, and uh, we have property here in the district. On the multi-purpose community center, I thought that was already part of Generation Park's overall plan to have uh, a significant community development within the Generation Park complex.
That's a great point, and I would tell you, uh, the cat's out of bag. I would tell you that's, that's who's contacting us, right? So, so I don't go too far into the conversation, because we hadn't gotten that far down the road. So it's our understanding that they have that plan as well. They heard about some of our plans, so they reached out to us for a potential partnership. And how can we come together um, and do something, maybe party to do that, uh, to bring? Because again, the thought is, again, thinking of, again, to, to remind everyone what's happening on the west side. We have the Smart Financial Center, we have these other places in Harris County that we don't have on the, on the, on the northeast side. Uh, so we're, we're in those conversations. So I'm not suggesting they're gonna suspend their, I mean, suspend their plans uh, for us, but we're certainly in those conversations. And so we'll, we'll know more about that as I complete those conversations.
Okay, to continue with that thought process, um, since it's going to be that type of a venue, I guess two parts. One, why would that fall under the school district versus something, as we're now talking, maybe a school district private partnership concept, I think would be more beneficial? But also, if we're gonna add this one hundred and sixty million dollars, what's the timeframe that it would be paid back? Especially if you're going to put an income-producing center uh, in it, rather than it becoming a permanent part of the school district's tax base?
Yeah, again, depending on how much money we would generate through that. Let me answer you, answer your first question, as far as whether, first of all, we didn't know Generation Park, that had not been revealed to us until recently. I'm not sure if they're gonna go forward with that or not.
Well, well, I, I think if you go back to their website and look at their master plan development, I mean, it has restaurants, hotels, um, and an entertainment complex all included in their overall plan. Timeline, I don't recall what, if, if they've ever shared that with us.
Sure, absolutely. But, but again, what was conveyed to me, that is, because I have a master plan, I'm not sure to me, they're, they're, they're moving forward with it. So again, that's the reason uh, they reached out to us, and, and so we're in conversation. So as it relates to why the school district, as far as again, um, whether they do, I'm not suggesting they wouldn't, if they did that on their own, that they wouldn't be cooperative with us, I, I don't know, that's, that, that would remain to be seen. But as far as my recommendation uh, to the district be to be independent and do either one of two things, either partner with them, that we have some control as a district and as a community to generate revenue back to our community, uh, and, and, and generate revenue uh, for the school district and or the community. So you can partner with them or doing that project on our own, that would be my recommendation.
Based on that being your recommendation, do you, or do you have projections on how you would, how it would pay for itself over what time period, um, based on what the concept is? You've got a concept for the community center, you've got an idea of what type of activities you're gonna want to have in it. Uh, so you would have a field to be able to do projections on what type of income and expenses would be related to it? So be able to uh, reduce the debt?
Sure, the, the, the best projection we have is based on something on the, on the west side. I would tell you the Berry Center, which is part of Sci Fair uh, I S D. And there's numbers upward to, to over a million dollars per year. Uh, some projections that we've received uh, from that particular uh, district, uh, he tells me three, I know it's over a million, so, so three, our L E N, our program manager helped us with this project. So they're generation, generating approximately three million dollars per year with all the events they're bringing uh, to, to the Berry Center yearly on the west side, whether it's concerts, whether whatever types of events throughout the year. Just keeping that place active and, and folks coming through. Uh, and again, uh, over a period of time, it will pay for itself and push, push revenue back.
Okay, yeah. I would believe that if you had some type of projections that would make it easier for the residents and the taxpayers to be able to say, okay, yes, that now makes sense to me for doing, for doing that. I agree with you, there is a great need for a facility of that nature in this area. Uh, and I believe that someone like Generation Park should definitely be your partner in it, because they benefit highly from uh, that new amenity being a part of their cell's pitch. Um, so yes, uh, I just would need more information than what I've seen so far about the community center to be able to devote one way or the other at this point in time. Thank you.
Sure, fair enough, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing too, uh, the person you were just talking about, um, the laptops and the online learning. Isn't there a way to have cloud-based learning that would not need to change, even though the technology of the laptop might change? The courses that you'd be offering would all be based on, in the cloud? And access to that would be based off of their cell phones, their laptop, anything would still give them access to that? So you wouldn't have to have the double investment or be concerned about wasting the taxpayers' money?
That certainly does. I would certainly defer to our director of technology, I, with cloud-based learnings. But I'm not gonna dispute what you just said, I, I, I'm not quite certain. Thank you. Alright, I don't see anyone else lined up here. Uh, but there's any other questions, please feel free. And again, if you want to linger afterwards, if there's something you want to talk to us more popular about, we certainly will hang around. Uh, give, give you opportunities to talk to us more, more properly, uh, if you would like, um. Mr. Thornton, do you have a question? Oh, I thought you.
That's okay, um, I just, I, I didn't want to leave without saying this. Uh, Ronald Thornton, and I'm one of the teachers who's benefited from the decisions that have been made. When I came to Sheldon, about four years ago, I actually had to work two campuses, because our enrollment is called for me to work at two campuses. And since then, I've seen so many things happen, and, and as I work at Kidar Elementary, we're at capacity. And so I understand all the growth that's going on, and I really appreciate you administrators spending all this time and making these decisions to have the opportunity uh, for this growth. And we have all these kids coming in the district, and, and I'm, and I'm really glad that my kids are here. Because I'm coming from Houston I S D, where the classroom was operated at fifty-three degrees every day. We freeze every day, holes in the ceiling, no, uh, we're not even gonna talk about technology, okay? So I, I appreciate you guys making this happen, because I'm gonna say it like this. I'm tired of North Shore being the standard on the northeast side of town. I'm, I'm tired of people, oh, they got a great football team, they have this facility and that facility. And I know there's some graduates in here, will excuse you. Okay, nah, but that's the, that, they were the standard for years. Now this is the standard. And, and I'm, I'm hoping we can keep it this way. And I'm, I'm thankful to the community members that've come out tonight, because we do, we do need checks and balances. We do need to make sure that, yeah, we're building all these great things, but we need to make sure that it's, you know, it, it, it's uh, conducive for everybody to afford it, to stay in the community. But I did want to thank everyone that's made it possible. My kids love this facility, um, trying to bring some more people out here. And uh, I'm really grateful to be part of the Sheldon I S D community. Uh, even my, my mother wants me to move into the community, so we'll see how that goes. We'll see how that goes, but uh, uh, again, I, I know it's a lot of hard work. I know that sometimes we give y'all some headaches about the things that go on, but I know that this is a great passion, and I appreciate the opportunity to have this town hall meeting, and, and I know that having all the kids in the community right now, yeah, we have a little overcrowding issue as well, the facility is unnecessary. And that's gonna help, you know, you build a facility, smaller classroom, and we go from a grade of B to a grade of A. So I, I can see it happening that way, but again, I just want to thank y'all for making it as possible, and I look forward to being part of the Sheldon I S D community for a long time. Thank you, it's a sorry, thank you.
Hello, um, just one quick question. With you guys expanding Cravens E C A, are you looking to do some rezoning as far as everyone going way out to the other E C A school? Or like, what's gonna be the capacity for Cravens at that point? The early?
Sure, sure, Cravens, so if, if bond paths weren't able to expand, and again, I believe, Miss Kate's correct me if I'm wrong, I think the expansion would, would increase by eight classrooms, which you questioned, it was eight times twenty, was it one hundred and sixty? So approximately two hundred additional students. So you're exactly right, we would uh, hopefully not have to, we could rezone as such that perhaps some spaces, some of the students that, that are traveling to Cika uh, could perhaps stay at, at Cravens or return to. That's correct.
Okay, so would it go by the neighborhoods or?
Well, it depends, we have to go through an exercise, I hate to tell you specifically what neighborhoods, but we go through like a rezoning process. Uh, of course, we look at proximity, we look at all those things, how many students, um, we go through an exercise to look how many. We go through an exercise to look how many students are living in particular areas. Obviously, common sense tells us the closer kid is to a student, right? You want students to attend schools in their neighborhood as close to their neighborhood as possible, unless they choose to go to a school of choice, because remember, we want to give you choice to go other places. But that's really the exercise, we would go through that process.
And do you have a timeframe for that?
Well, if the bond, you know, hopefully, the voters will say yes in May. And I would tell you, Cravens, as I mentioned in the presentation, the two things that are most urgent that we would start with is Cravens ECA, expanding it, and Noel Middle School. I would tell you right now, those are the two most pressing campuses as it relates to leaving. We have others, but that's at the top of the priority list.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, then closing. First of all, thank you so very much for taking our time and coming to join us. I want to conclude with, I tell you, as your superintendent, we know we have a lot of work to do. But at the same time, I want to applaud our teachers, administrators, these folks work extremely hard. It's very challenging and dynamic work, education, as you probably know. We have beautiful, awesome children. And I tell you, the work is not done, we have lots of work to do. So, I want to make sure I'm clear, I talked about the progress we made, but we certainly are where we want to be. We have an extreme amount of work to do. At the same time, we do have to celebrate when we make gains. We have made gains, and we're very excited and proud about the direction we're going. And we thank you for your support. Again, we're not here to tell you how to go, we just want to inform you, and so you can make an informed decision as you go to the polls. And so, thank you again for being here. And again, if you want to hang out, we can talk a little bit more. Thank you so much, God bless y'all, have a good night, be safe.